Records show that all commissioners are present and accountable except for Commissioner Clark, who's absent on excuse. We do have our newest member, Commissioner Roger Cecil, here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. We have no non-agenda public comments from the room. We move on to approvals minutes. Is there any discussion? We have minutes from January 14th.
Your mic.
Sorry. We have minutes from January 14th, 21, and 28. Are there any discussion on any of the minutes? Hearing that upstart.
Just a quick comment. On the 21st, I don't recall any meeting in the last 14 months going less than 34 minutes, and this one is only 34 minutes.
So you wonder about that one, huh? Whether that one's accurate? Do you want to propose a change to the text? Okay. Any other questions or comments with regards to the minutes? Then let's, if we could, have a motion for approval of all three of the day's minutes for January 14th, 21, and 28.
I make a motion that we approve all three minutes for January 14th, 21, and 28, 2015.
Second that. Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, really none. We now move to a public hearing. We have a 2015 docket of plan and code amendments, and so we are conducting a public hearing on miscellaneous housekeeping code amendments. There are several that we will be looking at this evening. And Dave, do you have a presentation, or do you want to just describe to us the two items that we were going to be looking at this evening?
Yeah. I don't have a presentation. These are pretty straightforward. And I did want to just back up on the minutes. Obviously, we're a ways behind on the minutes, the big push for the comp plan update. We just didn't get to the minutes. So I think there were 10 sets of minutes that were ready for your review, but we decided to break them up into smaller chunks, and so you're not dealing with so many for each meeting. So we'll be bringing them back to you in similar packets as we catch up.
Excellent. Thank you.
So tonight, we do have two housekeeping code amendments that we wanted to bring to you. These were both initiated by City Council on March 3rd, 2015. The first one has to do with changing the requirement for mailed notices. Currently, the code requires applicants to mail notices. Mailed notices are typically done to a 300-foot radius from a project. And the current requirement has them getting a certificate of mailing from the post office. We have heard from several applicants that have had some problems with that requirement. The Bothell Post Office is used to that, processing those, but other post offices aren't, and developers oftentimes prefer to go to their local post office rather than coming to Bothell to do those mailings. Other post offices they've been to where they've gone to get this certificate of mailing and been told that they don't exist, or that they don't know what it is. And I did talk with the Bothell Post Office, and they said, yes, other post offices that don't deal with these regularly might, especially lower-level employees, might not know about this particular process. We already require, along with that certificate of mailing, an affidavit that certifies, or that attests, that the mailing has gone to that 300-foot radius, along with a map that we provide and give to the applicants, showing the radius where the mailing goes to. So our proposal here is to simply change the code to drop the certificate of mailing and just require the affidavit, and we can alter the affidavit to reflect a statement that, yes, indeed, they did mail to those addresses.
Are there any questions of Mr. Boyd?
Yeah, I did have a, actually, basic naive question here. What is the difference between a certificate of mailing and an affidavit?
An affidavit is just a letter stating that you have done the mailing, in this case. A certificate of mailing is something that you actually have to purchase from the post office. They charge 38 cents per piece, which seems pretty minor, but for a large project that may have 100 mailings, and then has the notice of application, the SEPA notice, the public hearing notice, some projects can have up to 10 mailings through the duration of the process. So, and also, Senior Planner Jeff Smith is here. He actually does development review and deals with these on a regular basis, so he's probably the best one to answer any questions you have. And feel free to jump in with anything else.
Thank you very much. The challenge, the greatest challenge, is that a certificate of mailing from the post office requires that you identify each piece of mail that you're going to deposit in the mail, and then you have to get the postmaster there, or the person working at the counter, to stamp, postmark, a sheet of paper that has the label on it, that confirms that that piece of mail was placed in the mail on that particular day. It's a very labor-intensive process. And again, as Dave pointed out, and really, very importantly, not all post offices understand it. They don't do it regularly enough. And so when we have to describe and explain to applicants this process that they have to do, it's really time and labor-intensive from the staff side as well, to be able to describe what they have to do. We have to give them forewarning that this is probably going to take them several days of effort to get ready to do this. They end up down at the post office, they're standing in line with all the other people. It's particularly onerous at Christmas time, as you can imagine, and they go up to the counter, and they have to go through each one of these things. It's very, each page of letters, there's six or eight to a page, and if you have 100, as Dave said, you have to go through each one of those. They have to be in sequence, they have to be verified by the person at the counter, and it just creates real havoc. And so, we get a lot of complaints from applicants for this very onerous process that likely isn't all that necessary. So, that's what I see every day.
And how does one get an affidavit?
So, we have, we supply to applicants a blank affidavit form. An affidavit is a sworn statement, that you say you did this, and you get it notarized, and you return it back to the city with your mailing, with your map that shows the 300 feet and every parcel that you created a mailing list for. Also, that mailing list is attached to that. And then, so it's, the affidavit is on top, and that says, yes, in fact, I mailed this. And it's a sworn statement, much like any other affidavit in a legal proceeding.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Stedman.
Do we notify them in other ways as well? Or, I know we do, but...
Correct. We do. The city, we notify in three particular ways we do. The mailing is one of them. There are signs posted on the properties, on the development sites, or on the application sites, whatever they happen to be. And you probably have seen them around town. They're four-by-four sheets, four-by-four wood signs, very large signs, posted on posts, on big posts, black and white lettering. They're done, they're all uniform, size, shape, lettering, everything else, so that they look the same on every project. So we do signs on the property, posting signs on the property, and we also do a newspaper ad in the Seattle Times, East Side Edition. That's our newspaper of record for the city.
So this is just one of the many redundancy ways that we inform the owners around a particular development, that there's a new development?
That's correct. And I can add that what we hear from not only applicants, but from neighbors and residents and people around projects and things, is that while they do learn of projects through the mailings that go out, they really hear about them by seeing the sign on the property. They also hear about them very often from their neighbors, calling them up and saying, "Hey, did you see the sign down the street?" And then they start talking about it, and then they call us. And that's really what the point of the whole thing is, is to just make aware, make them aware, that something is happening, that an application has been filed, where to get more information, and that sort of thing. So they come to us then with that. So, the certificate of mailing is a confirmation process, but it just may be more onerous than is necessary to achieve the same outcome.
And the packet included other surrounding jurisdictions' requirements. The City of Redmond is the only other one that does have this requirement, although in their case, and in several other communities, the city actually sends out the mailing. So, and I've been told by at least one developer that Redmond doesn't actually do the certificate of mailing. So, we may be the only one in the area that is actually requiring it at this point.
Any other questions? Commissioner Vliet.
Yeah, I guess, I just, one of the reasons I guess I would like the certificate of mailing is, I mean, it just kind of, while an affidavit's great, I mean, I assume that the staff time is pretty tied up, very busy with other stuff. There's nobody going to check with neighbors to make sure that they've received a mailing. Because I guess, in this day and age, where we're all just kind of maxed out with regards to emails, and work mails, and everything else, could be a large property. I don't know, I was gonna, a follow-up question after this is like, it says like, one or multiple signs on a property, but a property might be, you know, 20 acres, something like that, or 10 acres, something like that. How many are required on something that big? Is it just one? And then, and then I'll ask that real quick. And I guess, so is there anybody in the city, I mean, do we know of times where somebody's filled out an affidavit? I guess we're actually changing the process, but will there be anybody following up to find out if people have noticed this one out? I mean...
Well, they still fill out affidavit today, and they will continue to do that. The difference is, is that you get this confirmation from the post office. It's important to note, too, the certificate of mailing only confirms that a piece of mail was placed in the mail. There's no way to know whether, well, you presume a piece of mail placed in the mail gets delivered to the address on the envelope, but very often, people, they don't read those, they look at them as they consider them to be junk mail, who knows what. But there's no, so there's no absolute knowledge that the person who it was addressed to understood what it was when it came in the mail. We get a lot of return to senders, by the way. We get a lot of mis, you know, not misaddressed, but just people that don't live there anymore, I mean, all those kind of things. And so, you were also asking, though, about confirmations of things. Staff very often will, we visit sites on a regular basis during the application review process, and we certainly note the signs that are posted on the property. That's probably the number-one thing. We get a lot of phone calls from people who do get the letters in the mail, and, you know, we ask them. I've gotten people who have said to me, "Hey, you know, I didn't get my, I didn't get this mailing, or my neighbor told me about this, but I didn't, I didn't..." And I'll go to the address list, not necessarily the certificate of mailing thing, but I'll go to the address list and say, "You know, your name is right here in the middle of the list. It seems highly unlikely that a letter was not mailed to you, but you are calling me because you understand the project, I mean, you heard about the project. You're calling me because, again, your neighbor told you that this project is being reviewed, and you saw the sign, or whatever. That's the point of the effort, is to get that phone call to be made." It's not an absolutely perfect system. There is no perfect system, of course. And that's probably why, I would argue, that's why we have multiple methods for doing this, so that we get, so we cover the board as best we can. We also, by the way, you know, since, these standards have been around for a very long time, notifying the public of applications. We also put them on our website, we put notices on websites. Many people see it there and get call, we get calls from there. There's just a lot of ways that people get noticed. And so, it's, I guess it's our belief that this one aspect of the mailed notice part of our effort, again, is proving more challenging and onerous, and time-consuming and difficult, than its benefits may, you know, make accrue. So, I hope that helps, yeah.
It does. And then, so, are there many properties in the Bothell area that have multiple signs for land use proposals?
There are a few. We, our land use project signs, the decision about how many signs to put on a piece of property and where to place them is made by staff, is made by the director or designee, which is usually myself or one of the other planners. And what we do is, we look very carefully at how a property lays out, adjacent streets, where people are likely to come from or see this, and we make sure that those signs get put up in places where people will see them. And so, it's variable, it's subjective, but very often, we have more than one sign placed on a property, and that sort of depends on its geometry and geography and other things like that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Cape.
One quick question on page one. So we have the selection that's been redlined out regarding computerized records, and that that's not a workable section anymore. That part being understood, are people of interest still going to be notified about applications, because that section's crossed out, too? So it says either parties of record or interested parties would have to be notified. I assume that interested parties will still be notified if applications are made, or if there's a hearing.
Yes. Any party of record. So anybody who has commented on a project, or asked that they be notified, goes on that list, in addition to the buffer area, around the 300-foot buffer area.
Okay. Yes. Correct. Thanks.
Any other questions? So I had one question, back to the, all the different jurisdictions that you looked at, Kenmore, Kirkland, Woodenville, Mill Creek, Redmond, and Bellevue. And you mentioned, Dave, that Redmond was the only one that still requires the certificate of mailing. Did they go, do either of you know, did any of the other cities go through a similar process that we're going through now, in terms of, did they have certificate of mailing requirement, but now they don't? And has there been any issue, problem, protest, citizen issue with improper notification? Or just, how's it gone, since they've...
Yeah. That I don't know. We haven't, we didn't do that research, that level of research.
But as far as you know, there hasn't been a problem?
Yeah. I haven't heard of any. I think noticing is an issue that every jurisdiction kind of struggles with. I know City of Seattle, that was, I mean, it's just inherently, when you're mailing notices out, and relying on, it's not so much a matter of relying on the post office to deliver them, I think we have pretty good confidence that they will deliver the mail, but relying on people actually looking at their mail, and not, you know, not putting it into the recycling immediately, I think that's where a lot of issues that we get from people who say, you know, "I didn't see that." But, and again, that's why we have the redundant methods.
Sure.
One other thing I would like to point out, for land use actions, like rezones, we also do a similar kind of mailing, same 300-foot buffer. But we send out those mailings, and we don't require ourselves to get the certificate of mailing. We do those, and even so, we get the same complaints from people who are on the list, who don't recall getting those notices, so. And there was a question about the number. Jeff can better speak to typical projects, but for example, on the upper end, when we did the Wayne Golf Course rezone notice, we, because the clubhouse area was not a separate parcel, it's legally defined, but it's not a separate parcel, we based our mailing on the entire front nine. So that was about as big a project as you might get, probably maybe about the same size as Bentley.
Right.
And that generated, I think, a list of between 100 and 200 addresses from that. So it's a factor of how big the property is, and then how fine a grain the ownership is around it. If it's surrounded by single-family houses, even for a single lot, a 300-foot radius can generate, I don't know, 20 to 30 addresses at least.
Yeah, easily, yeah.
And just to clarify, you do make an effort to find the impacted citizens their email address, and send them an email as well? Or use it just a paper mail?
Yeah, just a paper mail, because oftentimes, they'll contact us by email, and then we have their email address, and then we very often end up communicating with them by email the rest of the way. Although, again, at each stage of the process, mailed notice is required to go out, and then another paper mailed notice goes out. For a lot of entitlement projects, and that's things like subdivisions, conditional use permits, those kind of things that go through public hearing, a lot of those projects have actually three noticing periods throughout their lifespan. They have a notice of application, if they're required to do SEPA declaration, they have a SEPA notice, and then they have a notice of public hearing. So there's a lot of conversation, well, from at the application side to the surrounding property owners. So it generates a lot of mail, this does. I mean, and it will, still, it will still.
Mr. Stedman.
David, did I hear you say that the city does not, whenever the city does a mailing, we do not use certified mail process, we simply use an affidavit? Is that, did I hear?
Well, the code language requiring the certificate of mailing applies to development proposals or permit applications. But when we do our rezone notices, that sort of thing, that portion of the code doesn't apply to us, and we don't...
That's what I thought you had said. It seems like we are asking the developers to go a step beyond than what we ourselves are doing. So, I mean, from my perspective, I'm very comfortable having the developer have the same level of requirement that the city has.
Mr. Cape.
Yeah, I'm definitely in the same boat as Commissioner Stedman. I agree with Commissioner Vliet about being open and trying to transmit as much information to our fellow constituents as we can, but if they're signing an affidavit based on the same list, I don't see that we have a lot of risk as far as missing people in the 300-foot border.
Okay. Commissioner Vliet.
So, sorry, this has been actually an interesting, it's actually a new business, this whole thing was a new business topic I was thinking about in the future, so this is kind of interesting that came out tonight. I just had a question with regards on, so it was, so thanks for the staff for putting this together. I think it's really well done, giving us all, a lot of cities in the area, and what they do in respect to this notification process. So there's, for instance, I'm just trying to look at them all, kind of wrap my mind around, you know, where we fall with regards to other jurisdictions. And so, as far as Redmond goes, I can't tell, like, for me, a big part of it is the footage requirement, like, how many, the proximity. It seems like we're, what we are on the low end, we're on the lowest end that I can find, except for Redmond, which doesn't even have one. Or at least, it's not listed on the, on page two or three, that kind of breaks them down. So I don't know if there's some way to find that out for next time we meet.
So you're, just so I'm getting what you're saying, you're saying Kenmore, I'm just quickly going through it, 1,000 feet, Kirkland is at 300, which would be like Bothell, Woodenville 500, Mill Creek 500, Redmond, it doesn't say, and Bellevue 500.
Yeah, and so I guess, and I'm gonna jump in again, so basically, the premise of my question is, I've always been a little bit uncomfortable with the 300 feet. I think it's too small, because I think Bothell, with regards, just maybe some of these other cities, is still, while density's increasing rapidly, there are some big parcels, and I feel like we are a little bit more rural compared to a couple of these other jurisdictions. And I can see where Kirkland's 300, but then, you know, you look at Mill Creek, which is 500, and, I mean, Kenmore, right next door, is 1,000, Woodenville's 500, so I don't know if and when, I mean, I don't know if this is the time to talk about this, because I know we've just gone through the code update, but I guess I'd be more comfortable if it was, if that number was increased, but I don't know if that's debatable tonight at all. Doesn't sound like what we're talking about, though.
Any other comments with regards to the, it's not exactly on the certificate of mailing and all, but I get your point, in that that number would receive the mailing and be notified. Any other comments with regards to 300, 500, 1,000, or Mr. Cape?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I don't know if by next meeting, we could just look at a few other jurisdictions, but I would hope that we'd fall more in the middle of that range as opposed to the low end, because several comments came up during the code update, that people weren't getting notices. 300's a pretty small zone around a potential project. We know that we can't paper the whole city, and we don't want to put that all on the developers, but at the same time, sharing information's good. So I would like to look at other jurisdictions, if we could, for next meeting, Linwood, and a few others, if possible.
And just for clarification, that 300 feet in Bothell is a, we call it a buffer. It's around the perimeter of the site. So if you have a smaller site, you are going to capture less people. If you have a larger site, you're going to capture a lot more people. So it's not a circle drawn from the center of a parcel, it's drawn from the boundaries of the parcel. Also, 300 and 500 feet are typically, those are distances that have been held in codes for a long time, and they generally came out of the county codes that preceded annexations or incorporations of various cities along the way. Some have just kept them, Bothell pretty much that way. King County side of things used to be mostly 300 feet, and Snohomish County was 500 feet. And I just, when we annexed the Canyon Park area 20-plus years ago, we just stayed with what our standard was at the time, which was 300 feet. So that's the origin of those numbers. They weren't just made up out of anything. They tended to come forward from the original jurisdictions that administered permits and things in those areas. But obviously, you're right, Kenmore, I mean, has pushed it out to 1,000. And it might be curious to see what is their rationale for 1,000 feet. That's a big number. That's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna be a big mailing list for most projects in Bothell.
Well, and it's interesting to read in Kenmore, it says 1,000 feet, "But the area shall be expanded as necessary to include at least 20 different property owners." So it clearly goes back to a time when Kenmore was very large lots predominantly, so.
Far more rural. I would absolutely agree with that.
Any other comments with, yeah, Mr. Stahl.
Overall, I'm in favor of the proposal. One thing I would like to do is be sure that we separate out the issues, because I do seem kind of orthogonal to me about, one is, we obviously want to be open, we want to let residents know what's going on, and this is talking about doing that. Switching from a certified to an affidavit, that seems like it makes the developer's life easier, but doesn't have any negative impact on the residents. I mean, it's not like we're saying, well, we're going to suspend environmental regulations, or we're not shrinking the number of people that they have to contact. So it, from my perspective, it looks like a general win there. You know, there's another question that's been floating around about, well, hey, as long as we're looking at this code, there's a bunch of other numbers here, maybe we should go tweak those. And that could be an interesting conversation, but I wouldn't want to hold the first one, I wouldn't want to slow down on that one while we explore the other ones. I don't know, process-wise, if that's something that we can do separately, but I'd be happy to make progress on one, and keep the other conversations open, if we want to discuss that, or look at other parts, or if it's on the code somewhere.
I think that is something we can do, and I was already thinking that, you know, strictly speaking, the council didn't initiate consideration of the buffer area, and that's something I'd kind of like to talk among, discuss among staff, about whether that's, whether we would need to ask for some council direction on whether they're interested in going there. But I can certainly come back to you, we can come back to you with a little bit more of a comparative analysis, and following up a little bit with the cities about whether they have made this change, as you discussed, looking at what issues there may be, other than just the larger list, to expanding to beyond 300 feet, if indeed, that's something that we can do under this process without getting further direction from council. And it seemed like there was one other thing. I do think, also, the note about the language about persons of interest and parties of record should be added in. We wanted, it was included in the phrase about the computerized list that doesn't exist, but we can excise that piece out, and make sure that that's still in the code. and make sure that that's still in the code.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just say, I think I'm in favor as well of, of that change in that requirement. And I'm also, I think, open to further discussions about, you know, who we're contacting and that kind of thing. And if we can, if we need to separate those conversations, I think that'd be a good idea, if, you know, if, if it expedites what we're doing. Yeah, I'd recommend, let's, let's get this one done, and then we can explore the other one.
So, I think I would agree. And so, if you could take back to the director, if it needs to go to the council, that we've noticed this 300, 500, 1,000, and it, we don't want it to slow down what we're doing here, but we would like the, the opportunity to look at it in the future. But if it needs to go before council first to have that directed to us, that's fine. But make, make the note to the director that we've noticed that and would like to discuss it further. Are there any, do we, do we want to discuss at all the specific language of the amendments? It was brought up already on page one. Are there any of the other language changes in the code that there's any comments or questions on, or need for comment or questions from the planning commission, Dave?
No, but if, if there are any, any comments or any direction for us.
The only thing that I could, that I saw was, and it was already brought up on page one, it seemed like that, that removing that language was a little bit different than, it, it appeared to me to be different from just that whether it was a certificate or an affidavit. But am I wrong, wrong there? Was, by striking that language, was that just, was that clarifying whether we were going to have an affidavit or a certificate?
You're right, it did go beyond that, and, and we'll check into whether that's fair game also, under the initiation. But we did that because it, it's just, it's not a, we don't, we don't have those 10-year records. So, it's, it's a part of the code that we, just isn't being done because we don't have that, that information there currently.
Any objection to striking that language then, from the planning commission on page one? So, I think as far as we're concerned, you know, we'd, we'd accept staff recommendation there.
Steve, you got one more question?
Commissioner Vliet?
Just a real quick one. So, the newspaper of record, just from my knowledge, is that the Seattle Times, or is it ever-
It is the Seattle Times East Side Edition.
Okay. I don't know if that's worth noting in there, but maybe that changes over time, so that's why we don't put it in there, so.
It has changed, at least once since I've been here. We switched to Seattle Times from-
Bothell Reporter, it used to be Bothell. Yeah, it's been, once in my 24 years here, we switched a number of years ago, quite a number now, I believe, I think, to the Seattle Times. It has a better, wider distribution, sorry, Bothell Reporter people, but it's-
And more frequent.
And that's the other thing, right, more frequent publications, and that allows every day of the week to be available for advertisements.
So, from a process standpoint, we've pretty well gone through issue number one. Do we want to move to issue number two, or do we need to in any way provide a motion? I think really, staff is suggesting that we bring this back. And so, really, what we're going to propose is that we continue this hearing to October 7th, right?
Yeah, at, at the end. We can do that after we've discussed that item number two.
All right, let's go forward to that then.
So, item number two, I think, is even more straightforward. This is, has to do with a reference in our code about disabled parking permits that currently references the RCW State Building Code, chapters of the RCW that are no longer relevant to this issue. When, when the city went to the International Building Code, which is adopted by reference in the state building code, that became the, at least the end reference for disabled parking requirements. So, what we've done is we've removed those specific and now obsolete references, just referenced generally the state building code and the, the general chapter, so that if they add new subchapters and change the numbering, it won't be affected. We don't, we don't think it's going to get moved out of that, that chapter 5150. So, this is truly a housekeeping item.
Any questions of staff on item two? Seeing none, I have just one, and so, it sounds like we're, in effect, needing to do this immediately. Is there any difference between the RCW and the International Building Code with regards to disabled parking?
Not that I'm aware of, and I'm not even sure that the RC, the state building code even has a specific reference requirement anymore. I think that throughout the state has, has adopted the IBC by reference.
Okay, great. All right. So, at this point, I think we've discussed both items, and just from a process standpoint, we're going to move this public hearing forward to our next meeting on this item, and we're suggesting that be on October 7th?
That's correct. So, yeah, a motion to continue the item to October 7th would be in order.
So, if I could hear a motion to continue the public hearing on these items to October 7th?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing on the two miscellaneous housekeeping code amendments to October 7, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We do not have a study session or old, old business today, but we do have some reports from staff and some material there. Is there anything, Dave, you'd like to tell us about these reports that we have?
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge that the packet includes Hearing Examiner John Galt's quarterly report for the first and second quarters of 2015. Those reports didn't have any direct direction for any action that, that the planning commission would need to deal with. So, those are just four-year information. If you have any questions on them, I probably can't answer them, but I can certainly follow up with, if you did have any questions about anything that was in those reports.
Any comments or questions with regards to the Hearing Examiner report for first and second quarter 2015? Seeing none? Anything on questions with regards to the Fall Work Program? Seeing none?
Well, that, I just wanted to say a few words about that. As you recall, there were three rezone requests that, that were deferred, that were brought up as part of the periodic plan and code update, that were deferred for future action. After that was, the plan and code update was, was finalized, that, as you know, spilled over at the council into early July. So, we really didn't have time to bring back anything in July, and then we had the August recess. So, the first of those deferred items is going to come back for a study session on September 23rd. And that'll be the Nike Hill Plan and Code Amendment request. And that one, on, on the calendar here, is identified as, in the Shelton View, Meridian, Third Avenue Southeast subarea. But we also included with the Coast Equity Properties proposal in Shelton View, the, we included with that the Malik request, which is actually in Queensborough across 228th. So, that'll be coming to you. And in addition to those two parts, we also, in the council deliberations on the, the periodic update, we had a request from a property owner along the east side of Meridian, south of 228th, to be included in the expansion of the R8400 area. We got that request too late, but we said, we are going to be taking another look at Nike Hill, and we can look at that area also as part of that Nike Hill review. So, Bruce Blackburn will be bringing that back to you for a study session on, on the 23rd.
Excellent.
Then, looking a little bit further ahead on the 7th, when, when this issue comes back to you, I'll also be bringing back to you for a study session, the, the deferred items that we were referring to as the South Riverside rezone. That is the one that was the firm in request to rezone their two properties from R9600 to R7200. Staff suggested that the planning commission consider expanding that to that whole area between the specialized senior housing overlay and I405. But we, we then recommended deferring that, that planning commission, and then council did decide to go ahead with the, the firm and his two properties. And then, that one also, when it got to council, there, there was a suggestion to also add the specialized senior housing overlay to that. And we had already done the SEPA notice at that point, so we advised council that, that that was, that would require re-noticing and SEPA, and would jeopardize the timeline for the periodic plan and code update, but that we could consider the, the specialized senior housing overlay expansion as part of the deferred action. So, so that'll be coming back on October 7th. I think we should be able to complete the deliberations on these housekeeping code amendments on the 7th. I'll come back with, with findings for your consideration, as well as the, the additional information that you've requested. And then on October 21st, that'll be the second, or that, the Nike Hill rezone request will come back for a public hearing. And then, looking, it's not in your packet, but just in case you were wondering about the other deferred action, we had been looking at bringing the Wayne Golf Course clubhouse rezone back in November. But with the City Hall move happening, the, well, the actual physical move happens October 23rd and 26th. But that whole week of the 26th is, is probably going to be fairly chaotic, and, and we decided that there, it really wasn't realistic to be getting a packet out that week. And so, that's probably going to bump the, the Wayne Golf Course clubhouse area rezone to early December, likely the first meeting in December, December 2nd. Because we'd already tentatively scheduled to bring back both Nike Hill and South Riverside on the remaining date that's available in November, between Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. The 18th of November is the only date that's really available for a planning commission meeting. So, so that's kind of the, the outlook for the next two, three months here.
Any comments or questions with regards to our Fall Work Program? Thank you, Dave. I think at this point, we're ready to conclude our meeting, unless there are any reports from members. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.